Is John, I don't know if John's going to give the LEPC update or not.
You know, we didn't ask him to, and I don't see him, so.
There's not much change. Well, I can summarize, I think, a little bit. We had one additional new case of positive testing, which brings us for the grand total of 21. But I don't know how many of those are still active, probably half a dozen or so, maybe not even that. But we're certainly still down in the very low numbers. School opening is the big thing. They're very, very active, a lot of reaction from the people, one way or another. But so far, it's still on track to do the slow hybrid of two days a week, Monday and Thursday, Tuesday and Friday with Wednesday off. And with the full family choice remote, if they want to do that. And so that's where it sits at the moment. I haven't heard anything since. I was not able to attend the back to school committee meeting on Monday.
I did.
Did you? Was there anything new there, Kate?
No.
Okay.
The only thing that was new, if anything, is that they're asking the people for the family, the family remote, to make the commitment until, you know, either the first term or the end of December. They haven't quite decided that. But those people who opt to come into school can opt out and go to full family remote at any time.
Okay.
That, that, that goes in one direction only.
And that actually makes sense because they've got to devote the resources to it. And if everybody suddenly wants to come to school, then they got a problem.
Yeah, yeah.
So I guess only one of us have to worry about that is Luke. And he's smiling.
I'm just glad they're going back at least.
So you're not going family remote, huh?
Oh, God, no.
Hey, Alan, the one thing, I don't know, maybe this is later, but I know I saw you yesterday in the FinCom meeting. I didn't get clarity on why they need the extra 300K for teachers. Did you get a sense of that?
No, that must have been before I got on the call. I was late getting to it.
Okay. I intend to chase that down because it's not really clear to me why they need.
Yeah, that's, that's what the school is saying they need in addition.
Well, Anne Mahan, the new business manager, presented some material last night. And among the line items was 300,000 for more teaching help. And it wasn't clear. Melissa McMorro had asked a question, but I don't know, I didn't quite follow it. I didn't get a clear answer, so I intend to, I intend to run that to ground.
And is that something that CARES can help with, I wonder?
Who?
The federal CARES money?
Well, I don't know. I mean, Kim Kane was on, and she knows all about that. I think they're doing a pretty good job at applying the CARES money to where it appropriately should go.
Right.
But it's a good question. So we'll, yeah, we'll find out.
Yep, okay, very good. All right, I have nothing else on LEPC. The, the neighbor delivery of food is going very, very well. That's continuing. There's some change in personnel. COA, the number of rides requested has gone up significantly, so, but so far, they're all being done in the vans. And haircuts and podiatry visits and all that sort of thing are going on just fine. The Firehouse slash Dance Studio dash barber shop is working well. So that's going fine. All right, let's go on to library trustees. Tim, is anyone going to be here to present that, or are we just going to take it?
No, Martha. And so is Karen.
Yeah, they're on the call.
Okay.
Hi, hello.
Hi, how are you?
I'm doing great, thank you. How are you guys?
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I don't know how to unmute my video, but we sent a note. I don't know if you have the note with you?
Yes. It's in our packet.
Yes, basically, the, we are in the process of hiring a couple of library staff. And the topic of paid maternity leave came up last year when one of our librarians was pregnant. And it has become even more important now, mostly because librarians are expected to use sick time for maternity leave. And we think that in COVID times, this is particularly troublesome. And now that we are looking into hiring a couple of part-time staff, it could be problematic. We can go through the document.
Okay.
So Martha, do you have the document with you? I can share my screen.
Oh, yeah, I don't have it on the device that I'm on.
Yeah, I am sorry. I'm having a little bit of trouble here trying to share my screen.
I have it.
Tim could share it probably.
Yeah, I, yeah.
I have it on my desktop. If Tim wants to put me on, I can share my screen.
Oh, that's why I couldn't share my screen.
Okay, hang on.
And so basically, we sent this one just to start a conversation with the board of selectmen because it is our understanding that currently in Carroll, employees that work over 20 hours per week receive 12 days of sick leave per year. And you can bank that up up to 120 days. So if that number goes up to, you know, 24 weeks, if you never get, take a sick day. So, but it takes a minimum of five years to save up sick leave to cover one paid 12-week leave. We want, listen, library employees, we would like, listen, library employees to take sick leave when they are sick as they are dealing with, with the public. And in the last, Martha was saying that, you know, she's been at the library for more than a decade, but in the last decade, several of full-time library staff have taken maternity leave. And they use various combinations of sick time, vacation time, and unpaid leave, depending on what they had available.
Yep, I think in 13 years I've been working there, I'm the only person I know of who actually had 12 weeks of leave saved up.
Yes, for example, there's a librarian here that just had a second child. And they're within two years of each other, so it would have been impossible to save up for that time in between the two children. The other issue is that more than half of the library staff is part-time. I'm sorry. If you work less than 20 hours a week, you receive very limited paid time off. The difference is that the state is now offering this Massachusetts Parental Leave Act. And that entitles both full-time and part-time employees to, 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 to have the benefit of paid family leave. It is something that, it is our understanding that municipalities can opt in or out. And we just wanted to bring it to your attention because we think this would be, probably the library is the department in town that would be most affected by this. And we think this is something worth looking into.
Okay, I mean, I think if we do it, obviously, if we do it for the library, we have to do it for the whole town.
Exactly, yes.
And so that's, that we'll have to look at the cost of that. And what, what that would do to our budget. But this is something we will certainly will consider. And we have, actually, we have an insurance advisory committee that has been looking at other sorts of things as well. So we, maybe we can have some look at this also and see what can be done with that.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I thought it was important for us to bring it up because we are probably the department that is seeing this issue the most, given how much we're working with the public. And the large number of potential people who would take a paternal leave, maternity leave at the library.
Yeah, well, I mean, we'd have, we'd have to make everybody eligible for it, obviously.
Of course, exactly, yeah. And, but others may not be crying for this as much as we are.
Could be, yeah.
Alan, is this separate, though, from the contract that the school has with the teachers? Is that correct?
Yes.
I don't know. You mean, in terms of?
Yeah, how their leave works.
Do they have any part-time people?
Well, they have some.
You have two different, Barney, you've got two different things going on. So I believe teachers who are covered by the collective bargaining agreement
Yeah.
have their own deal.
Right.
Right, so that's separate. Generally speaking, I don't know that there's a requirement, but we treat non-bargaining unit employees of the school the way we treat the town employees. I mean, they are town employees, right? So I think Alan's point, you'd have to look at those people and decide if you're going to extend there. Now, in that group, and I might, now I get a little murky, but I believe part-time teachers are not part of the CTA. You should know better, right, Barney?
Well, no, a part-time teacher can be a member of the CTA.
A below 20 hours teacher?
Well, yeah, that's a good question.
Yeah, I'm not.
You know, I don't know what it is currently.
Right, but I think, well, so the major, I mean, you know, not to get too much in the weeds here.
Yeah.
The majority of the teachers are governed by the collective bargaining agreement of the CTA. So that, they would not be affected by this change.
Yeah, so we just want to look at the cost, obviously, you know.
Yeah, we have to look at all, Anne Mahan would know, we have to look at all non-bargaining. When we look at the impact of the town, we have to, on the school side, it's the custodians, the cafeteria workers, the secretaries, the, you know, administrators, the, I think the aides, I think the under, under 20 hours teachers, you know, there's a bunch of people.
Yeah. Okay.
All right.
Well, yeah. Yeah, we talked with the committee, looking at benefits, that it would be worth considering this as part of,
Yeah.
part of what they're looking at.
Yeah, because, you know, the insurance advisory committee is looking at the degree to which we pay health benefits, subsidized health benefits. And, and they can probably look at this at the same time because it gets the right mix of people on that committee. We'll probably, probably want to add maybe somebody from the library to that committee as well, however, if we're going to do this.
I think our assistant director, Jennifer Pike, is on it.
Oh, is she? Good, all right, excellent, very good. All right, well, thank you for bringing it up, and we will certainly address the issue.
Excellent, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Can you stop the screen share, please?
Oh, sorry. MC, stop screen share. Thank you for reminding me.
All right, we're running a little bit ahead of time, but that's okay. Highland Building Committee. As you know, the Highland Building has been semi-condemned in terms of access to it. It's kept locked now, except for a very limited access. However, it's still being used for storing the durable medical equipment for the COA. And I don't, other things are in there as well, but that's the only one I'm aware of that's being stored there. But we have to make a decision on what we're going to do with that building. And so essentially, what I'm proposing is put together a group to come, come back to us with a recommendation. And on that committee, I would like to see, and I'm, this is just a suggestion, though, I'm open to other suggestions as well. Representatives from the master planning group, and John Valentine has already volunteered to do that. COA, Joan Ingersoll has agreed to be on. Fire, Brian Sarrows. School Committee, we don't have a representative yet, but certainly we want somebody on there from the school committee, since they own the property. Finance Committee. Planning. Municipal Facilities and Long-Term Caps. And so I haven't gotten any of that, that last group. I haven't formally asked them yet. I wanted to get the approval of the Board of Selectmen on those are the appropriate people to be on the committee. Comments, discussion?
Well, I think this is a great thing to do. It's overdue that we decide what we're doing with that building. I'm wondering if somebody from the Historic Society should be on it.
Good point. In fact, I've already asked Phil Drew.
Okay.
Okay, so let me, so we have school planning, us, MFC.
Master Plan.
I'm sorry, what was left?
Master Plan.
Master Plan.
COA.
And COA, that's right. Those are the kind of the master, and, and the fire.
Fire.
Department as well.
Finance.
And finance. That's mine right there.
Yeah.
That's a fairly large group, so I don't think you want to expand it unless you.
No, I think that's probably a good representative. And I'm sure others will chime in. But one of the, one of the issues is when we would ask them to report back. Is this something that we would like to have done by the Springtown meeting? I mean, it's not going to be done by the Falltown meeting, we know that. But maybe by Springtown meeting, or?
Maybe we should ask them to, you know, convene as soon as possible and then, you know, come back to us with their, after they've done a little bit of looking into or figuring out sort of what they need to do to make a recommendation, they could tell us whether they're, they would be ready for something for Springtown meeting. And ideally, when would that, that, they'd have to have that sort of in mind by, what, February? To just sort of do a placeholder?
Or March, yeah.
Yeah.
But that gives them five months.
Yeah, I think, I think, you know what, I'm wondering if we should invite the building commissioner as well.
Probably, probably not a bad idea. Yeah.
Well.
I mean, he's.
Hate to take up his time, though.
Yeah.
In meetings.
Yeah.
It's limited.
Yeah, well, okay.
I mean, really, what we need is recommendations on the disposition of the building. We know the condition it's in.
Yeah, okay. Just, you know. Okay. Yeah, I think we should shoot for the spring, whether we make it or not, you know. It's another thing, but if you don't shoot for the spring, it just drag, and I don't, you know, we really should make a decision sooner rather than later.
Yeah, I mean, we've been at this a long time now. And it's not getting any better. So we're, we need to, we just need to have a decision made. And it's, and it's going to be controversial, we know that, so. It, but if we don't ask, it's not going to happen.
Yeah.
So, all righty, I will, go ahead.
No, sorry, the, the only thing is, so Phil is Historical Commission, or Historical Society. Do we have anybody from the Historical Commission?
No, that's, that's a good point, yeah. I was, I was thinking they were the same, but of course, they're not, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, just because, one, I think it's, it's, you know, well, it's certainly a historical significance to the town, right, but.
Yeah, and the, and the commission is probably the more appropriate.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think it'd be great to have Phil, too, you know, Phil's a wealth of knowledge, but, but yeah, I just, because I think, is that the historical district, too? I don't, I don't know exactly where it ends, but.
Well, it's certainly a historical building.
Yeah.
All right, I will, I'll, I'll start, I'll ask each of those groups to propose a nominee for approval at the September 8th meeting. And we'll go from there. That's okay. Okay, excellent. Very good. We're moving right along here. Review of the draft of the town meeting warrant. I did meet with Jim Dar, who is the new chair of the Finance Committee.
Oh, is he?
Yes.
Oh. Interesting. I like Jim. Interesting pick, yeah.
Yeah, especially since, I believe next year is his last year on the.
He's going to term out, yeah.
He turns out, I think, yeah.
I think he's going to be a good chair.
But I think he will be the chair.
Yeah.
And you know what? I bet you he accepted because of COVID, because normally he travels a lot.
Yeah, good will be. And Lynn Lipinski is going to be the vice chair.
Great.
Good, good.
That's a good team.
Yeah.
And for those of you who have other, who are, who have liaisons as boards of, select board members, police, police and fire are both victor.
Oh, okay, because it used to be Jim, so I guess they traded.
They traded jobs.
Okay.
And Scott is going to do the school.
Okay, instead of McMorro.
Right.
Okay. Well, she, did she do the?
She was doing the.
She was doing the region, yeah.
She's doing region and.
Yeah. Yeah, Lynn's going to stay on, Lynn's going to stay on the Board of Health, and Aaron's going to be the Municipal Facilities Committee.
Okay, he was already.
Yep. So not too much change, but they're.
Yeah, no, that's good.
Yep. And I attended their meeting last night? What's, what's this? This is Tuesday, yeah, last night.
This is Belgium. This must be Tuesday.
Yeah, and so they're, essentially, they're taking the tack of saying, look, fiscal '21 is going to be perhaps fairly stable relative to '20. Certainly not as good as '20, but not horrible, but '22 is liable to be a real serious year. With both '22 and '23, they're thinking that we need, we need to marshal resources in case those years have big cuts in them in terms of revenue.
And what's the, Alan, did, was there any sort of update on what's happened so far this year in terms?
Tax collection.
Yeah, they were, the fiscal '20, I mean, they were down about 1%. The answer is that's, that's like $300,000. But collections are still happening, and so they're not quite sure, but the, turn off my ringer. The, I'm sure it's a robo-call anyway. Yeah, they, they don't, they don't see a big dip this year, but they're really concerned about next year, because that's what happened in 2008 as well. It was the following years that had the major disruptions.
Yeah.
I just checked again today, and our unemployment rate in town is holding at 9.5%.
Not, not a big improvement. No, yeah.
Well, but it's, it's, but we're really fortunate, right, compared to the state level.
Well, the thing is that it does not count those people who are consultants in town. It's really just, you know, the applications.
Just people who applied for unemployment.
Right.
Yes.
So the self-employed aren't, aren't represented at all.
That's right, and I think there's quite a few of us in town.
Yep.
You're saying quite a few consultants who are unemployed? But they're not, they can't get benefits, so they don't show up.
That's correct.
Right. And what's the historic unemployment in town is like one or two?
1.2 in March.
Well. So there is a difference, though. I mean, I, I know this is definitely the 2022, you know, doom scenario is definitely a Jim Dar outlook. But it is, and I'm, I think it's prudent to do that. I think it's prudent to be prudent, let's put it that way. But this is a very different thing. The '08 thing was a really structural problem with the economy that it took a long time to unwind. We don't know when there'll be a vaccine. We don't know when they're going to come back, so there's all those variables. But when that happens, I don't think there's anything structurally wrong with the economy in the way that the wake of '08, you know, took, really took a decade, right, to get back. I just, I mean, it's neither here nor there, but I think, I'm just saying, that philosophy that Jim articulates is a view, but it's not the only view.
Yeah.
Not to say we should spend the money.
Yeah, it's interesting, the regional school is, however, taking the same view.
Well, they're, because, well, two, yes, they are, right? And also, they don't have much choice because Concord's sort of imposing that view on them.
Right. Yeah. Well, and again, and of course, Concord, I mean, with, they have a much larger commercial tax base than we do.
Yeah, I mean, we, right.
Which means they have, they have one at all. And, and it's, but, but so, how will we affect it? It's very hard to say.
Yeah, I mean, but I think you're right, Alan, that, I mean, in some ways, and I've made this point before, that what has historically been our weak point, which is no commercial revenue to speak of, is a strength because there was nothing to, you know, Fern seems okay, and that's it, right? So. But I think, you know, where you're going, you and Kate are going on, if 10% of the people are out of work and it translates into some people delin, you know, that percentage or comparable percentage in delinquency in the tax bill, then that's, you know, a big deal. And if the state, you know, we can be as fine as a fiddle, but if the state, which I believe has the highest unemployment in the nation, is that right?
That's right.
You know, we can't be getting state largess forever if that's what they're encountering, so. Anyway, dry powders, whatever the reason, I think, dry powder.
I mean, the other, yeah, the other real concern is that any, any drop, any significant drop in revenue for us is people. Because, you know, we're, we're so heavily, our budget is all, you know, very largely people. And so if we, if we have a significant drop in revenue, that's going to have to be affected, and that's always painful.
So how would you characterize the, the outlook of the FinCom in their plans for the budget they're going to put forward at the town meeting in October?
They didn't say specifically, but when, but my take from being a fly on the wall in the discussion is that they see a reasonably flat fiscal '21 budget to what they passed in the spring. With some changes in the great unknown as a school.
Yeah.
But not a whole lot beyond that. I think they're, they're going to be relatively conservative in expenditures. And again, part of that is just they're trying to marshal resources. But it's a, but they didn't, they didn't seem to be particularly, I mean, it wasn't, wasn't a lot of discussion about big changes from what we did in, in the spring to what's going to happen in the fall.
Okay, and then they're going to be meeting with us for a joint meeting, right, in?
Yeah.
September?
September, yeah.
Yeah.
And we did still, and I guess, Tim, you, I know you talked with Wayne, that still the target date is October 17th for the town meeting.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's not the 10th, which is what we have on this warrant. It's the 17th.
17th, I think, yeah.
It was better because the 10th was, you know, Columbus Day weekend, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
We still have any Columbus Day in this country?
Yeah.
That's the chief, yeah.
It may be relabeled, but I'm sure we're going to have something.
That's right, we'll have something, right. Yeah, no, I think, I think everybody's kind of agreed on the 17th is the target. Which means, which means a not later than a September 15th or so decision on the warrant.
Yeah, so does that mean then for our Board of Selectmen meeting that they're going to bring, I mean, they're going to have a pretty final proposal?
Yep.
Yeah. Okay. And are they doing? You know.
They're going to start, they're going to start meeting with all the committees now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right.
All right, other than that, I don't think there's anything more to say about the warrant. We may want to, actually, Tim, you did talk with, with Wayne. There were some things he thought maybe we could take off.
Well, I did, I think Wayne said his feelings wouldn't be heard if there were no marijuana articles on the warrant. As it turns out, there won't be. The planning board's not going forward.
Yeah, I checked with Adeline about that.
Yeah, he asked, he also asked about Highland and, you know, the DR issues, if those are, they're currently not on the warrant because we don't yet have a proposal. But potentially, I guess, those could be, could be added. I anticipate we'd have revised proposals from both long-term caps and municipal facilities. The FinCom talked a little bit about that, that
Right.
it might not be the same warrant article that was slated for, you know, the spring. So yeah, very little change from last time. We, the CONSCOM dropped their request, and planning board took a couple of articles off, so we're down to 12 or 13 as it stands now. But I think Wayne's hope is it's going to be outdoors in September. He's looking, I think, hoping for another kind of efficient meeting. I mean, nobody wants to, you know, be there all day on a Saturday in October. And, you know, who knows what the weather will be like, but.
Yeah.
But he said, whatever the warrant is, he'll work with it, you know, whatever the board feels ought to go before the town, he'll, you know, deal with it as he always does.
Yeah.
I, I have a question about the appointed town clerk warrant article. That's one that seems to me we ought to think about how we're going to prepare for that. And what information we want to get out to the public? Who's, who's doing that? And if we're thinking we need stuff ready by September 15th, I'm just wondering what how we want to handle that. And I don't know if there's other warrant articles on here that that would fall into that same category where they really need some, you know, preparation and communication done by some portion of the board or so anyway, I just wanted to throw that out there, starting with that particular topic, the the town clerk warrant article.
Yeah, I mean, again, you hate to keep pushing things off, but that's something that probably could go till spring since it's not anything urgent.
Yeah.
I agree. I mean, who's is Peggy pushing for that? What is the rationale behind it?
The rationale behind it is that the town clerk is the highest paid elected official that we have. It's actually paid a salary and yet they could show up just one hour a month and still get paid the salary. There's no accountability and there's no evaluation, except that they can get voted out again, but after, what, three years? So and because there are now more and more state mandated reporting and duties and, you know, things that you have to be a professional for, knowing how to handle documents, things like that.
So in, no, okay, so makes sense. But in the history of Carlisle, have we had many bad town clerks?
No.
No, but we, as I said, because of the professionalism of the job at this point, we have a very small pool from which to choose in town. So.
So the bigger the bigger question really then is you could, it would allow you to pick renegades like, you know, Tim Goddard, who come from some.
That's correct.
Yep.
Oh, that makes sense. Okay. But given we have a Carlilian in place and she seems to be doing a good job, I agree with Alan. There's not a lot of urgency to because, you know, with these oddball issues tend to somehow you get along, you get into, one can get into a lengthy debate about how many angels can dance on the head of a.
Yeah. Well, and we did the last time it was brought up. It was a contentious debate. And, you know, in looking and the hope is by spring, we might be able to be back in the auditorium.
Yeah, no, I'm fine with it. Right.
I don't think you can have any kind of a reasonable discussion on the.
Right.
I agree.
On the patio in October.
Yeah, I agree with everybody.
I don't think there's a lot of urgency at this point.
Yep. And again, with a view toward the weather, the smaller the warrant, the smaller number of warrants, the better. Yeah. All right. Anything? Go ahead.
Yeah, Tim, I mean, Alan, I also just wondering, do we need to? I know this, the IT proposals later on the agenda, and I didn't know if there was anything in there that required the town to vote on it. So we can.
Help funding?
No, the funding is already in place for that, I believe.
It's all set. Okay.
Correct, correct.
Yeah, no, I don't think that's that's anything for town meeting.
Okay, good. And then the amendments to the personnel bylaw that's on here. That is, is that related?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Tim.
Yeah, no, Town Council expects to have a draft of that very shortly. And they know that you and Kate are working on that article. So as soon as Tom sends that out to us, I'll get that to you. They're working on both that and there's a municipal facilities article easement for the, well, you know about that one, too, the DPW Septic.
Yeah. We may or may not.
As well.
Yeah, okay. And we may or may not need that because we we might be having to use a different easement on a different property if we put it in a different place. So anyway, it's still up in the air. We're still doing, still looking to save money over there. But anyway.
Yeah. So we don't yet have a draft of that, but we will buy our, you know, before our next meeting on the 8th.
Okay.
Which we're going to invite the Finance Committee and the Long Term Caps and Facilities Committee, I think. We ought to have them all at that meeting so that we can decide what's what's in and what's out for the town meeting.
Yeah. And then do you see us, Alan, voting our position on these warrant articles? Say at the at the September 8th meeting or waiting and doing that?
I would think probably about on the meeting, the meeting at which we adopt the or, you know, finalize it, we can then say whether we support or not support.
So that would not be on the 8th?
Not on the 8th, yeah.
Okay. All right.
Good. Okay. Anything else on town meeting warrants?
Luke, is there anything else around CPA? Because I know at one point you said you might issue, you know, open it up again.
Yeah, we actually, we haven't met, but yeah, we should. We should send out applications because there are a couple of things now. There there's the clock tower and then there's the Burke building, the windows of the Red Brick Building. Yeah, so I can I can send that out. I mean, it's just a matter of. But did we ever appoint, and Tim, you might know that, did we ever appoint the rest of the committee? Did we ever appoint Samantha and Pete?
I don't believe so. I don't think completed those appointments.
Yeah, so it'd be good if we could do that just because we, it's a tough committee to get together. I mean, granted, everybody's around, you know, usually everybody's in a different part of the world. But, but yeah, I mean, if we could do that, that'd be great. But yeah, we'll put out the application and then give people a few weeks.
Good.
Yep.
Yeah. All right, we're running well ahead of schedule here.
Well, we got our goals that we could discuss.
We could, absolutely. And I did summarize those and send them out to everybody. Any discussion on that?
Actually, there were two copies and I couldn't see any difference except for the font between the two, but maybe I've missed something. I don't know.
Nope. The the one that's the one was simply the working draft from the meeting. And then what I did was summarize it on the one that has the smaller font. I'm trying to find it here in my mess. There we go. The one entitled Planning Session is the is the summary.
Okay.
So that's.
Is this the one from the packet?
Yeah. Yeah, there was another one called Strategic Planning Session. That was the one that that actually are the notes that Mark took. Mark Way took.
Yeah. So the one thing I thought we ought to discuss a little bit is the FY21 goals. So, you know, we've got some very specific things on here. And some of them are, you know, already done, like paring down the liaison assignments. But I'm looking at, these really are to go through till next June. And most of what's on here takes us through, you know, the fall.
Yep.
So I think we ought to give a little thought to what what do we think if we're looking at the sort of strategic drivers in the section above? What what would we say are our goals for the second half of this? Our term this year?
Yeah, I agree. I mean, when we when we, when I went around to everybody like you, Barney, when I, before I became a selectman to just, you know, kind of understand everybody's interest, one of the things that came out from several people was sort of a general improvement of staff development, training, you know, policies. And I know then, Tim, I queried you and you sent me some working documents that I think Council is working on with regard to policy manual, I believe. And I don't know, we circled back. And then we had sort of a general discussion about maybe streamlining the way town hall is organized and maybe reorganizing. I'm looking at my notes here, but I don't remember. I know we talked about it in the session with Mark, but I don't think it ever bubbled up to being a goal. That was kind of a major theme that bubbled up.
Yeah. And I do remember at one point in the conversation, he said something like, well, you know, you could, you could say the first part of the year, you know, the the big issue is the getting the budget established and making sure, you know, the town is staying safe. And then and then have as a second goal sort of doing some of the things you're describing, David, which is, you know, the sort of the in working on making, you know, making everything just work better as kind of an internal, you know, town government improvement goal.
Yeah, I think one of the things which, and I'm in looking at the list again, I'm I'm actually kind of surprised it isn't on there. Was the whole idea of more formal work plans and evaluations
Yeah.
of the people in town.
Right.
And and I would be actually quite happy to add that to to under probably under process improvement.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, how much does that? I agree with you. How much?
I agree.
Does that dovetail with Personnel Board? I mean, what is?
It does.
Personnel Board more has to do with is the job description and and classification appropriate for the position. Really doesn't have to do with managing the people.
No, but it does have to do with personnel policy. Because in personnel policy, we talk about evaluations and this and that.
So Kate and and Tim, who who's driving from the select side? Who is driving the changes, Tim, that you sent me, like, who's guiding Council on those changes? Are they sort of self-guiding and then we're going to evaluate what they come up with?
No, I outlined to Council what the board was looking for. And once we get the draft back from them, we'll have the opportunity to kind of bounce it back and forth and make sure that it's what the board had in mind. There there were really two things. The personnel bylaw kind of deals with one half of personnel, but the personnel policies are kind of the nuts and bolts of personnel that the board can change literally, you know, during the year. It doesn't have to wait for a town meeting vote. The bylaws more like the umbrella that that everything falls under. But certain things like evaluations probably could be addressed in in the policies more easily than in the bylaw. But that's what something that Council's looking at right now. But so we were waiting to hear back from Council. The board initiated it.
So, I mean, Kate and Barney are the reps to the Personnel Board. Is this something that, you know, a subcommittee of the board should tackle once the draft is out? Or, I mean, what's what's your, what are your guys' general, you know, operating procedures to tackle these these kind of assignments?
This is the first time we've done this. I couldn't tell you.
Well, first time you've done that, but I'm just saying generally, is it general pattern to create a subcommittee and let a smaller group, you know, dive into details and then report back up the recommendations? Or do you like to do things as a group of this type?
Well, I would say on this one, you know, in my experience in the last year, we haven't had really a small working group, you know, draft something and come back with it. But I think on something like this, I think it'd be more time, you know, better use of time for, you know, the two of us to look at the issues and and sort of formulate some ideas and then bring that to the Board of Selectmen for some discussion and input and reworking and and go from there.
Yeah. So I mean, that's certainly been my experience on School Board, that policy issues are better done in subcommittee. It's just there's so much, you know, body and fender work. And it's too cumbersome. And there's too much, it's not so, I mean, in part, it's too cumbersome, but maybe in bigger part, it's just so time consuming.
It's always good to start with a with a recommendation and then you can deal with the recommendation.
So so I'd like to circle back. I think I see two different things, right? So I see that as a as a package, right? Get the recommendations from Council and form a small working group that that's already formed because you guys are liaisons, but create a, you know, a working group that deals with that and interfaces with Personnel Board and the Council to make sure that every, you know, come back with a recommendation. The other half of it is the sort of reorg of the town hall structure, you know, personnel structure or chart, if you will, to streamline the way things are done. That's I see that as a separate issue. And I don't really have a good idea about how to tackle that, but like to, if we have time right now, I'd like to have a little discussion on it.
Alan, do we have time to discuss that?
Yeah, we have time. Yep. We're way ahead of schedule.
Okay, well, I can tell you Barney and I and Madeline Blake have formed kind of a little informal group just because we were talking about that issue. We call ourselves KABAM. That's for Kate, Barney and Madeline, Madeline MB. Anyway. And it was initiated, this whole thing was initiated by Madeline's report to the selectmen about some of her ideas about reorganization of the land use departments. And Barney and I, you know, the board was in support of that her ideas, I understood at the time and at the how the board was constituted, that was with Nathan, but I thought we had and Luke, you can, you know, correct me if I misunderstood, but I had understood that she had support from this board to look into reorganizing the the land use departments. And we kind of got derailed, of course, by COVID. But we are starting back up. We're trying to start back up to talk about it. And we also actually did have a conference with Town Council and he was very excited. You know, whoa, wow, this is, you know, this is the exciting stuff. This is a fun stuff to do, you know? And so they did come back to us with something, but we haven't had enough time to digest it. Basically, what it was was a bunch, they had requested all of the job descriptions for those positions and they rewrote the job descriptions, but we haven't had enough, the command group has not had a chance to get together, digest that and figure out what that meant for the organizational chart. So we were planning on developing our questions and getting back to Council and saying, wait a minute, this is not what we, how we thought we were going to be stepping through this process. You know, so anyway.
So let me ask you, you know, kind of dumb question. When you talk about these land use boards, you run into another step. Well, let me ask it generically, not even that. When we have another elected board in town, like School Committee or Board of Health or whatever, do we have authority over them or we can? How does that work if you wanted to reorganize another elected board's like function?
In fact, we do not have authority there, which is why I was so delighted when Madeline came up with the idea because she is an elected board, the chair of an elected board, and that that was kind of the area of the town government, which I thought really needed to be streamlined and organized a little better. Having been, of course, a member of the planning board for low these, you know, many years ago. And had seen it from the inside. And I don't know what Luke, you should jump in, give your titty pums, you know, whenever you want. And so Madeline did invite the chairs of the committees, those affected committees. So CONSCOM is not, is elected, isn't it?
Yes, appointed.
CONSCOM is appointed.
CONSCOM is appointed.
Oh, it's appointed. Okay, so we do have authority over them. Board of Health is elected. And we do not have authority over them. And so that was planning.
Stewardship.
Land stewards that which are supported by us. There were, there are a couple of places that some of us, we were, we. Land stewards that, which are supported by us. There were, there are a couple of places that some of us, we were, we appointed. Some of them were elected and we figured if we can get the elected boards on board, um, then we could do this together.
Okay. So you would need a Board of Health person as well then?
Yes. Yes. That's the tricky one because Board of Health has two really separate and almost incompatible in certain respects functions because they've got the sanitation. And of course, Alan, you're the ones that's best positioned to discuss that because you were a Board of Health member. But there's the public health arena and then there's the public, the sanitation. And in fact, right now they're, I don't want to say they're at odds with one another, but the public health portion of it has really stressed, um, the delivery service on the other side for the sanitation.
I'm sorry, can you say that a different way? You're saying because of the needs of public health right now, sanitation is getting the short end of the stick. Is that?
And yes, it's taking, uh, longer times and, uh, we're kind of, I think.
But I mean, nobody would argue. So I've, I've, at my, we had at our last meeting, I think it was, I was given the, you know, mandate, I don't know if it's the right word, but I was asked to coordinate, you know, Board of Health, Board of Selectmen, Board of Ed, uh, meeting, which I did and we had it. And then we had another meeting last night, which was a, I don't think it was actually a joint meeting, but it was a Board of Health Task Force. So they are, you know, they, I think they're focusing, or at least grudgingly, I might say grudgingly, they're focusing on the right things of the incredible pressure, you know, for public health right now. So, yeah, if the other stuff takes a little longer right now, you know, it takes a little longer. But I mean, nobody could argue that the, the second mandate, you know, the public health mandate is priority at the moment.
Yeah. Yeah, I would say, you know, in, in the past years, probably 80% of the time dealt with water sewer. Uh, and, you know, except for the, you know, the annual flu clinic and the tick.
Right, exactly.
Time. I mean, that, that was, those were relatively minor time consumers of the Board of Health. That has shifted completely.
Yeah.
Appropriately so. And of course, it may shift back, you know, but.
So is, is the, is the vision, the land use sort of consolidation, let's call it, would it only be the sanitation piece that would go into that bucket?
Well, that's, that's the difficulty because then, um, I don't know how you, you know, how you do that with the employees, you know, with, you know.
Well, we have lots of splitting. I don't know about that because I think, I mean, wasn't one of the reasons for doing this is to allow cross-training of people to do different things?
Absolutely. That, that, that would be for the, the lower staff. I'm thinking about the Linda Fantasia.
You think about Linda, but I mean, I don't, we're such a small town. I don't know why, let's just say hypothetically, that there was a single land use board that had all the functions of land use and then there's separately a public health function. Maybe that's not even a board function. That's a, under the purview of town administrator function. I don't know. I don't pretty suppose the outcome, but let's just say that's a regular staff person, the way you're talking about town clerk, you know, just somebody who's got a job to do. Can one person fill both jobs if it's neither is a full-time job?
I suppose, but I guess, well, one of the questions I believe that we asked, the KABAM group asked Town Council was if we had a town engineer, let's say our DPW, head of DPW were an engineer and could do the inspections for the sanitation.
Or just take it out of the public health.
Can, can it, but, or is it statutorily in there?
Well, it might be.
We didn't know.
You're gonna get, I mean, my belief is you're gonna get resistance. I think if we, I don't know. I mean, this is a separate, this is why we need to have a task force on it. But if the goal of the land use pieces is to streamline stuff about land, I think that's absolutely a smart thing to do. And then you figure out that structure and where it's, the town inspector does it or the public health, it doesn't really matter as long as there's a public health piece to that part of land use. But as you're pointing out, the, the public health mandate specifically, say with pandemics and tick-borne diseases and the other things that we deal with, you know, in this 21st century Massachusetts, that's become its own thing, right? I don't think we should let the tail wag the dog. I think that's a really important mandate that needs a focus that has nothing to do with how we use the land, right?
Right, but sanitation does have something to do.
Oh, right. So I think they need to be bifurcated. Again, they need to be bifurcated.
I, I agree, but I'm not sure legally we can bifurcate it. That's the, that was the question that we were asking council. Is there some state statute? And I don't know, maybe Alan, you know that answer to that.
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. So, so is that, and I have to say, since the minute I moved into this town, I have heard nothing but complaints about, you know, sanitation issues and how long it takes to install. A, you know, and every landowner in town, um, has to pay for their own septic. And then apparently it costs more to do a septic in this town than in any other town. And so sometimes I wonder if we wouldn't be better off having an extra staff member to, you know, it paid in our taxes, so to speak, um, to get the better service and, and maybe.
Right, but Kate, I, I don't, I, I agree with you, but I, I guess I want to make sure that we approach this strategically. That's a fix it, that's a fix it that should be done. But I, I, I just, I worry about getting into a turf battle about, well, it's a public health issue and so a public health person has to check in. The first thing to me is let's figure out the organization of these land use boards and whatever else we want to streamline. Maybe, I don't know if there's any other streamlining that's going to be done with public works slash building inspection. I don't know. But in any case, I mean, I would be looking for kind of a structural recommendation from a top-down to say, how is this best organized? And then deal with those little pieces. Those, I'm not debating that that's an important issue to people in town because it is. Everybody has a septic, but it shouldn't be the driver of organization. I guess that's what I'm saying. It should be streamlined in some way. But it doesn't need organizational, it, it needs a process improvement, right?
I agree. I agree.
So is this one working group? Is all of this on Barney and Kate's shoulders? Or is this a separate working group from the personnel policy business?
Well, I think it's, it's, it should be, Kate and Barney can, can be the board reps to the working group, but the land use boards also have to have reps on that working group.
Yes.
Right. Well, I mean, it's a lot of lifting for Kate and Barney. I just want to make sure.
Right. Uh, you know, actually, uh, it began under Tim and, um, then it, Tim had, he, he was just under an avalanche of work. So, um,
Earlier this year, yeah, it was right before everything kind of went.
Exactly. So, um, it got derailed, but we, as I said, we did have this, we had nothing better to do one afternoon and had this phone call and then, you know, it's kind of in the background, wanted to keep it alive. So it's still alive. And I think it has to be done without the staff, basically. In fact, the, at one point, Madeline had, had done a whole outline and her idea was it, it was going to be done by the chairs of the boards. At one of the five or six meetings that were, had been planned, the staff would be invited in for input, but we felt it was important to, um, to have this be, um, divorced from the, the, from personalities, you know? And, and when you have staff who are doing the job that they are doing, I think it's harder for them to see possibilities for how else it could be done. So, um, it's not that we would, you know, totally exclude staff. We would get their input, but we thought it would be a sleeker group also, uh, without fewer people if the staff were not involved in every single meeting.
No, I agree. I think probably that's a fair statement. So, again, I'm, you know, how, how do you want to proceed? I mean, I, I think the first one, the, um, Personnel Policy Review, blah, blah, blah. That seems a pretty contained package that you and Barney are well positioned to drive.
And I'm happy to continue to work on that. I, that's a particular area of interest for me.
I'm actually the Board of Health liaison. And Kate, you're the planning board, right? So I don't know if you want to have a different working group that tackles this one? Or do you want to stay as a pair with Barney? I, I don't.
No, I would, I would be fine with letting somebody else take that piece. Kate, if you want to continue to do both, great. Yeah, I'd like to continue with, with what I, you know, call the KABAM group. Yeah. Um, because having been on planning board and seen. I'm still very interested. Yeah. And you can get, uh, you know, Madeline to, I'm sure she wants to continue on it too. She does. Yeah. So David. You, it's, you'll have to call it the KADAM.
They're gonna call it the goddamn by the time we're done.
Luke, what do you think about all this?
Oh, no, I, no, I think it's a good idea. I mean, um, you know, I definitely think it makes sense, but, uh, yeah, and, you know, I think we've been talking about it for a while. And, and it's really, it's time to, you know, uh, see if we can actually gain traction, you know?
Yeah.
But yeah, you do have to have the, the buy-in from the board.
You remember, Luke, a couple of years ago, we had a letter from the, you know, um, some sort of a policy letter that came out that developers would have to see all of the land use people, you know, and I worked for years to get, get them to agree to do that. So.
Yeah, no, exactly. And actually, the best thing that ever happened, um, to, to force that is John Mativier, you know?
Yes, he, he did.
Yeah, before you can pull a building permit, talk to, CONSCOM talks, talk to, well, talk. And, uh, you know, that, that was really, um, it's the best thing we could have done.
Yeah, no, I used to feel sorry for developers because they'd be bounced back and forth like ping pong balls, you know? And, um, it just wasn't fair.
No. No. And the thing is too, I think, you know, just having somebody kind of oversee all of that. It, it eliminates the, you know, somebody that can take a quick look and say, okay, you need to talk to CONSCOM or you don't. You know, I mean, you, you get people all the time that say, oh, I don't know if I have wetlands on my property. I don't know this. I don't know that. But then also too, yes, speeding up the Board of Health process. I, you know, kind of echoing the same thing that you said, Kate, that, you know, and, and I mean, it's, you know, we are a small town and we do have contractors and consultants and that sort of thing. So it slows things down. But yeah, it's just, it's too long a process and, um, you know, we really, I think, you know, need to make that more efficient. And if we could have somebody that can help with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it makes sense.
And by the way, I said I was sorry for the developers, but then on the other hand, the developers used to also play one board off against another.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
I see it all the time on CONSCOM. Oh yeah, we talked to Board of Health and they never did.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
So let's go back to our goals then and see if we can just, you know, figure out what we want to add in here. Is it going to be under sort of process improvement and we put in?
I think. Yeah, I mean, I think the personnel management thing can be under process improvement. I think the land, the land use board reorganization should be under goals.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. I think also under goals, we ought to have a highland building decision.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
And I think we need to have under goals an insurance advisory committee decision.
Yes. Yes.
Good.
So we just loaded Tim up, but, um, right. Tim, Tim will have to also, you have to, you know, let us know, you know, and let us know what we need to let go. Cause it, you know, because you're gonna, I assume you're going to be the one that's going to do a lot of the driving on this. And, uh, so we need to know.
Yeah, I'll take another shot.
It's your timing, but I think you probably want to clear the deck through town meeting without getting into this right now. We got a lot on the plate at the moment.
Right. Yeah. A post-town meeting. Yeah.
It would be nice to be poised to get on it as soon as town meeting is over. So, and we need, that means that we need to do our invitations to whomever we're going, you know, for our groups and get those memos written and, you know, be ready to roll.
Right. And, and some of these are relatively independent of preparation for town meeting. I mean, they're, they involve people who aren't involved in the preparation of town meeting at all.
Yeah, but I don't think they're mutually exclusive.
No.
No, no. I mean, but, but I would just say, you know, like, right now, there's a lot of, at least for me personally, is a lot about school opening and school testing. And for you, Alan, there's the LEFC or LEPC, whatever it's called. And, and you know, we have, anyway, I want to go back to, um, this thing that, uh, Karen brought up when we talk about library and it's relative to the, your insurance thing. So there was a memo that school council helped draft that was given to the teachers that out, and it was pretty well-written. It, it outlined the sort of waterfall of leave options for teachers if they, you know, choose for whatever reason not to, they desire not to, or they are asked by their doctor not to, um, participate in in-person school or for some period of time. So that's kind of like all that stuff. And, and I would just, just say, when you, whenever you go down that path on the insurance team, you want to loop back. I men, mentioned earlier that the CTA has its own set of things, but the school as a school and also with the CTA has already developed this kind of set of things with regard to leaves. So I don't want to dovetail into that.
And also, uh, the, the other thing about the, the, I do believe though, that the school contract is in line with benefits like 50%.
Oh, yeah. No, it absolutely is.
The rest of town. So whatever we do with the town, we, it's going to go to the school for sure.
Right.
And their next contract. And so.
Even not even that, the, the benefits percentages are all aligned and all those things. They have a different, and the rules under which, um, you know, the, the rules of when one qualifies for F FLMA or, you know, some other, there's like three different layers of things one can get with regard to leave. Those are like mandated by the Commonwealth or the feds. So that's all in one. I'm just saying that framework's been worked out already, so don't reinvent the wheel.
Yeah, really comes, I mean, one of the things we have here is, is what, how you qualify for benefits at all in terms of.
Yeah, now that one is, that one has, okay, so that one really has town-wide budgetary implications.
Exactly. Yeah.
And that's, that's why I agree with what you said. I mean, treading lightly, you don't want to create a situation for a small number of town employees, however deserving they might be. That opens you up to, you know, unexpected costs.
Yeah. Anyway, that's, I mean, there's a, there's a whole committee put, already put together to look at those kinds of issues. So I think we're in good shape there. Okay. RJ, are you on?
He is.
Do you want to go right to there or do, do?
I don't know. He's, he's muted.
The resignations and appointments, we could also.
Yeah, I just, yeah, I mean, he's scheduled for 8:30. So.
Yeah, there he is.
There he is. Do you want, do you want him to go now so he can go home or?
Yeah.
Let's do that. RJ, you ready?
Last time he stayed to the bitter end, right?
He did, yeah. He thought, because he thought we were on the agenda.
I was on the agenda or not either. So, uh, I'm going to go through, uh, a set of slides which has been, uh, based on a request by, uh, Tim to, uh, inform the Board of Selectmen about, uh, what it takes to take the digital network infrastructure project, which I, uh, sort of like to call Carlisle One for many reasons, and, uh, move it forward to completion. So that's what I'm going to do today. And in the process, I'm going to do two other things. I'm going to go back in time because I think that'll give us some context and answer some of the questions you may have if I had just started somewhere in the middle. And number two, I will generously provide you with some of the thoughts I had along the way as I went through the process of doing this project. A lot of the things I heard you guys talking, I have my own thoughts, but I will keep that for another day. So, uh, let me get going and, uh, you, you guys can all see my, uh, screen?
We can.
Excellent. So, uh, the initial focus of the project was around, uh, let me step back. I mean, I've been in town for a long time. I haven't done much as a town government. And I think there's a stage in my life where I said I could do something useful. And I was looking around. I did talk to a number of people. I started with Victor, talked to Kate and a number of other people, ended up with Nathan and then Nathan and Tim, and we talked about this need for a town-wide phone system. That was February, I believe. That was February, I believe, and, uh, we had a initial discussion and, uh, so I said, yeah, I'll take it on, we'll do it. And, uh, so, uh, the initial feeling was, if I remember right, you know, just put this thing together. It might take two years to do it. And I had a little, uh, hypothesis that I wanted to test out, which was that. You know, everybody and even people in other towns say, you know, everything in town takes too long. And I just wanted to test that and see if I could do it differently. Uh, so got a team together, Scott Hefner from the school, excellent, excellent guy. And David Mackay, who'd also been previously working with Nathan and Kim on what was their, uh, technology group. And given that our focus was to introduce, uh, town-wide, uh, phone system. We did the obvious thing, which was go interview all the people who would be affected. And we did what I would call intensive and pretty complete interviews of all the town folks. And, uh, we spent quite a bit of time, I should say, that David played a role in that and I played a role in that. Scott was not as involved in that phase of interviews. Uh, what we found was that it was a little bit of a tower of babel, you know, everybody would say I want this and that. And they would use different words to describe stuff, so it was a little bit confusing, but luckily, uh, uh, we came up with a sense that. For many reasons, this has to be a digital phone system. Didn't make any sense to go back to analog, except in some special cases like the police, which. I won't go into now, but it was like a backup system for police. You might need a few analog lines. Uh, but yet we were grappling with this tower of babel of words and, you know, meanings and stuff. And luckily, we came up with this taxonomy of, uh, not taxonomy so much as a vocabulary. Of, uh, words used in the voice space, which is another name for digital phone system. It says voice over IP. And, uh, we were able to really nicely fit all the things we heard in town into the requirements for. Uh, a voice system based on the vocabulary used in the industry by voice vendors. We reached out to about three or four. One was Mitel, one was Avaya, and the other was Ring Central. Now, uh, Mitel, obviously, they have a setup even in the police right now, uh, which, uh, they are using. And we heard good things about Mitel, so we were going down the path. And in the process, I also reached out, one of the things I like to do is network. So we reached out and I reached out to a bunch of towns and I connected with Newton. By far, Newton is way ahead of most people. And the good thing is they have an excellent, excellent CIO, just a nice man and who knows his stuff. And the benefit of that was not that I was going to build out another Newton-like system in Cala. But that he had a network of people who had used as vendors and people who knew stuff. And it was a very fast trend because of him. But as we were going through this, we recognized another problem. We recognized that the underlying fiber cable, which had been laid in town some years ago. Before my time at least being involved in this, was not operational. I, I like to call it the highway of North Korea. You know, you get beautiful roads and suddenly you fall off the road because there's no more low road left there. So things are not connected, things are sort of in a state of, you know, uh, what I would call disconnected state. And, uh, so I started thinking about that and saying, how can we put a voice system or any system for that matter of fact for the town? In a meaningful way, if we did not have something that at the underlying foundation level was not complete and. Integrated and operational. So we said, okay, let's do a project shift. Let's go from, uh, doing this. Phone system to fixing the underlying network. So somebody might say, yeah, well, that's project one, this is project two, but for me, it was very, very different. Uh, for me, it was doing the phone system was like saying, here's my house. Hey, just tell me what I should do with the doors. Should I paint it? Should I do something? Talking about the network was a different story. It was like talking about, hey, we need to put a foundation to this house. Very different, even though it feels the same, very, very different. It talks about underlying structure upon which everything that this town would have to build in the years to come would have to operate on. Okay, so, uh, I recognized that and I said, what we need to do is to sort of think about it as. Not just, uh, task, but have a vision for this thing. From which we drive down everything else such that, just like to lay a foundation for a house. The foundation by itself doesn't mean too much, but without it, nothing means much either. Okay, and so we said, what do we need for a foundation? For a digital architecture, for a digital foundation that will take this town well into the next, uh, many years. In in terms of a digital, uh, infrastructure for the twenty-first century. So that was what was in my head. An architecture for the town of Carlisle for the twenty-first century. So a few things came up. It has to be singular in its nature across the town. So that all the town departments and buildings have one highway to operate on. You can't have one part of the foundation here, then another part of the foundation there, the two are not connected, you know, it doesn't work. And so we said it has to be singular, it has to be interconnected, it has to be high-speed. Luckily for us, before our time, the cable had been laid. And one thing I'll tell you folks, it's a lot of cable. A lot of bandwidth sitting in this town, which makes a real plus for the town in terms of the future. And I think that's a big, uh, advantage we've had. And also it cut out some of the cost, significant cost that we would have had to put in. If we had to do the cabling. The network also has to be fully operational in the sense that everything has to work together in harmony. It has to be easily manageable. I should have a graphic interface, but no matter where I am, whether I'm in China or wherever, I should be able to manage a Carlisle town network. And as you have seen, one of the big things today is distance has come in as a picture. I like to call it the era of being physically apart and digitally closed. And the role of technology in the next few years is going to be to make the sense of being physically apart. Using technology, making it feel like we are physically close based on a digital understanding. So not only did we have to build a, uh, connected network, but step by step. And that's why I put it on the top there, we would have to increase security, make sure that's proper, we have to put backup, we have to do redundancy. All these things have to be done, but everything can be done in a thoughtful, systematic manner. And the first step was get the foundation right and connected. What, now, this is not just a technical project. I don't think of terms in, uh, think of projects in terms of technology. Because technology is only a means to getting to something else. And in this case, one of the biggest things that stood out in my mind as I looked at the way this town is operating is it's totally disconnected. Everybody would, if you, if you don't do a phone system for the town, the school will go and do a phone system. The police have their own phone system. Guess what? You have disparate systems, multiple costs. You know, you go put the same kind of functionality in three or four or five different places. This is a tremendous opportunity to cut costs. One of the things that you realize, or we realize, anybody realizes is that once you get on the digital platform, there is a massive. I mean, by a factor of thousand, uh, reduction in a lot of activity. I can give you specific examples of how I've done that in startups and it's amazing, but I won't go into that. But the approach here is that we use the eighty-twenty rule. We recognize commonality where it exists. We don't have to repeat things that are commonly used by everybody, but at the same time, respect the departments and say, the police department has a special need. They build it on the same platform as much as they can, but when they can't, maybe there is a reason, a good reason for doing it separately. But the culture, the culture of the town should be that every head of the department gets a, a point where he puts it. Or she puts it on the common platform and loses a point when he or she puts it on a different platform for the sake of putting it on a different platform. It eliminates stovepipe implementation. It, for example, now you find somebody doing, managing the phone system part-time in the fire. Part-time in the school, or actually full-time in the school, part-time in the police station. People are fragmented, adding costs. Uh, and the other thing, which is very, very clear as I went through the whole project was, man, you want data? You'll have to go and ask somebody, beg somebody, or you'll have to get one piece from here, one piece from there, that everything doesn't come together. Wouldn't it be nice to have a good integrated data repository? All these analytics we do and we, I outside people do analytics, not required. We put it into our system, we have our own information analytics tool, everything works together and we get the information we need. I'll say something in passing, I'll come back to that again. I think having a good financial, integrated financial system is a key to this town. Uh, going on with the vision that I, I've suggested here, which is a vision that we just had. Uh, there are other things that can be added or removed, but anyway, the COVID has made it very clear that. Distributed workforce operations is a must. And across the town. And it also saves money because if you look at most of the operations in large organizations that have many people working in the same building. I worked in India for about six years with Accenture. We had tens of thousands of people in each building and right now it's about seventy-five thousand people. But what they did recently is they moved a lot of these people to work from their homes. Why? Because it saves on electricity, air conditioning, building costs, names. I don't see why our town, our little town can also benefit somewhat by this kind of thinking. And also, from the other perspective, if things go wrong, if we have another COVID, we don't shut down the town. We don't shut down the ability for town people to get some report because they had to go through somebody and somebody else and that thing is closed. So all of these things are things that are beneficial if we think about an integrated approach to building this foundation. So I hope I've shared with you some sense of why it is important. It's important because it. From a business standpoint, it integrates, it facilitates collaboration, it cuts costs. It simplifies maintenance. I can run the gamut of reasons why it's a good thing. So now I want to talk about. The network. If I go back and I'll tell you here, the first bullet is what we are focused on really. Making that integrated highway operational. So we had fiber in the town. It was laid and, uh. This is one place where I feel like I wish I was standing in front of a screen, but I can't point things out, but I tried to do that. Uh, this picture on the right is a picture of the cabling that was done. And a few things I'll point out without going into too much detail. You'll see at the bottom the Carlisle Network Hub, that's a school. And you see this thing called UG, that's underground. And ninety-six F means the fiber at that point has ninety-six strands. I can tell you, just through your sense of capacity, you can run the whole town hall on two strands of fiber. But that's the capacity we have in this town. Now you see that from the, uh, school. You see that ninety-six fiber cable running all the way down to the center. You see the red spot there. I'll come back to that later. From there, the ninety-six fibers break up into twenty-four fibers, which are twenty-four each. One goes to the fire, one goes to the town, one goes to the police, one goes to the library. So twenty-four times four is ninety-six. You see the little dotted lines here that says UG, that's the section where it's all underground. There is nothing going to the PWD. That's another mile of fiber that might have to be laid if it's important to do that. But the most important thing was, when you lay fiber, you can do different kinds of configurations. There's something called a double ring. There's something called a hub and spoke. All of these things lend to having different levels of redundancy and backup. But in our town, for some reason, I don't know, maybe it was cost and I can't pass any judgment on that. You see this red spot here? The red spot is a pole in the middle of the town. If that pole goes, you're dead. Okay, the reason is, for me to communicate from the police to say the town hall. I go from the police, I don't go straight to the town hall. I go all the way up School Street to the Network Hub, which is sitting in this school. And there, there is some switching mechanisms, which is, which understand and which are intelligent, say, oh, this packet of information come for me. Coming to me, it's really for the town hall, so it sends it reverse back to the town hall. So everything comes to the school and that gets routed to the appropriate location. So if that goes. We might have some problems. By the way, I'm going at a clip. If you have questions, you can freely ask me and you can stop me. And if I'm being obtuse, you can also ask me to change what I'm saying. So I got a grip of that and then I started looking around at, you know, how can I understand this thing? And the first thing we understood was that there were what are called switches. Switches are sort of. If you invite the intelligence behind routing information from place to place. There was a switch in the. School or multiple cities in the school, one in the town hall and one in the fire. I was surprised to find out that the police didn't have a switch which was connected to this network. Now they have some other switches which are connected to some other little network that they have built, but not to this network. And the library didn't have one. That was one major concern. I had sent you some documents and you saw the quality of the way the paneling and the connections to the paneling were done. Not a good job, terrible job actually. That thing is like, uh, I call it the guardian knot. It's hard to understand what's going on there. That has to be taken out and fixed, but that. Basically, what happens is this big cable comes into, say, the town hall. The town hall, it goes in through a router into this switch. And from the back of the switch, it goes to different ports in the building. So with this stuff right now, there is no documentation for the cabling that was done, or there was not. And there is further no mapping or documentation on how the back of this patch panel, which you saw. Goes to some particular location in the building. So somebody has to go playing with this to find out where this. Number twenty-four on this little patch panel box is in the building, or they have to. Uh, keep switching things around, it's messy. Uh, so these are the things we found out. So we said, hmm, if we need to get this all working together, we need to do a bunch of things. So we developed requirements, we reset technology, and I can tell you that I was fortunate to get a lot of good advice from Newton. Um, and we also have some good resources from the town. As you know, Abbas Ingal's husband, Anil. Uh, Anil and I work together and Anil has this company called NetScout. It's a huge company, which is in the networking space. But on a different type of networking, which is basically, uh, they do network monitoring. But I reached out to Anil and I said, Anil, hey, I need some help because I'm not an expert, a real expert on this end. He was more than willing. They have a worldwide global network. He connected me to his CIO and his CIO and myself and Scott. Then become much more active than the initial phases. We had a meeting with their CIO and their top network expert and they said, we'll do anything for you, we'll help you, we'll, you know, advise you. Uh, we have equipment here, but we're not using, some of that is useful. Depending on what you guys want, we can help you. So that's another very good resource for the town. And the outcome of doing all this work, as you know, we did the requirements, we did the research on the technology. Uh, we negotiated vendors. I'll tell you, one big part of my work was negotiating vendors. Yeah, I, of course, I love to negotiate, but apart from that, uh, I feel that the town could benefit by. Not paying any vendor, the first thing they ask. I go three, four rounds of negotiation before I agree to anything. And we got a good bid, a good vendor recommended by. Contract, which is a company that did the cabling for Newton and for Carlisle. Uh, and we got it at about eighteen thousand eight hundred, including the equipment. The latest bid, which I sent to Tim, is about a thousand dollars more because we delayed and, uh, we were getting some equipment cheaper. But it's about twenty thousand dollars to complete out this system and to make it sort of. At at least bring it to a reasonable state as defined in the requirements document. And as responded to in the court from the vendor unified. Now, I've had some discussions about unified and, uh, drive tech. I, I think my opinion is, uh, drive tech may be good at other things. I don't know, I haven't worked with them. But I've heard good things about them at the level of desktop support, but this is not their cup of tea. I wouldn't ask a brain surgeon to do something in my heart. So similarly, uh, better chipper faster is my motto. And I think we did better. I think we did it much faster. We did it in four months when I think the thought was this can be done in two years. And I I I don't take, you know, that approach. I like to do things quickly and it's cheap and faster. So. Those are the things that we put together in terms of thinking of operationalizing the network. Now, like everything else that we do, it's not enough just to do busy work. We need principles around busy work. So first thing is that anything that we do. On the digital infrastructure side, I I'm sure that that applies to all of you folks. As you think about your organization, about your vision, your organization, your process, your information sharing, all of that, same things apply. And in fact, uh done together and properly, this. Infrastructure will absolutely support the kind of. Uh organization, environment and the needs of what you put together as of solid. Well-defined, well-connected, collaborative structure at the top. Uh so driving to the vision is important. And one of the things I've been talking and I heard a little bit of this today in the discussions you guys had, working in small tiger teams. I think we have a tendency to sort of build these big projects with. People trying to, you know, measure the ocean. I I'm not sure that's very useful. And talking specifically to the I T work. Uh and not commenting about what I'm talking to. It's very, very important that whoever runs this project is strategically clear and not technically confused. I can do a bunch of things and you can put it together. But. The reason that Amazon can do so much is because it has thought very deeply and. Very strategically about what its vision is, what its mission is, and then has let everything else fall down from there. Uh some of the things I saw when I took over some of the documents from the past was that. It was quite confusing. Uh there was no strategic thinking and the technology and the architects talked about were like twenty years old. Now, another thing I truly believe in the town. And this has something to do with my, at least my uh uh. Services aspect of my career has to do with processes and metrics. Uh we were running forty thousand people, but we were running it so tight, it was so good. But there was a very clear understanding that without process and metrics, nothing matters. If you don't know where you're going, it doesn't matter where you go. And my goal, humble goal in this case, is to try to. Put together some metrics, I'll show you that later, and to use that. To show how we can begin to generalize these things as metrics that we use across the organization. So spread the culture is part of what I. Had in mind when I uh thought about the application. But I'm coming to. Thing that was asked. Uh what would it take for somebody to properly and to do it in that is effective, efficient. And eliminates the tremendous political battles that I had to fight. I just lived at that. It was extremely disappointing that a person from the town comes to the town health. Puts two hundred hours and, oh, you guys must say two hundred, that's a lot, not really, it's more than three hundred hours. And then the last day of the financial year, we told, hey, we're going to stop this project for this year. Unfair. I think it's very unfair. Uh approval, so you guys need to either approve or disapprove of it. I hope you approve it, because I think it's very meaningful. Uh and uh you guys need to agree on what I have told you at least, and if you have other thoughts, add that. To your, to the requirements that this person who leads the team has. And approve the funding. I do not think, I I went around tin cupping for this thing. I do not think that should ever be done in the town again because tin cupping is basically a lack of process. Uh and finally, I think we need to communicate what we're doing, but. Not suddenly come out and say we're going to do this massive thing. Do it slowly. As we have success, we talk to the town more and more. You know, thoughtfully. So Al, as part of that, I'm going to send you this person to then handle it the best way you think is appropriate. So you. Uh the other thing, finance. It is critical that finance steps up and has a clear understanding of what their system. Uh I'm not sure that it is that difficult to get a much better view of numbers than is currently in existence. Um I've said, uh I I don't want to go into that, but again, this is a really, really, really important part. Of what the town needs to do. And if I were asked, once you put this foundation in place, what's the first thing you launch on it? It's the finance system, not the phone system. Uh I would request that you reconstitute the tech group that was in the past. Because number one, it doesn't really exist now. Number two, uh I I per se didn't think it was the right perspective that was being discussed. And give it a new name and include folks either new or old into it. But make sure that it is not, this is not part of that. And then we have hundred discussions about, is this part of the old group or the new group? I think that's the decision you guys need to make. Now, Tim plays an important role in this. You're in charge of procurement team, so all the legal stuff needs to be blessed by you. And I think I would look to you for the legal procurement stuff. And if there's somebody on the board who would like to take a look at the agreements, I think that's a good thing to do. To have a second or third eye on the uh document. I would look to Tim to provide political yeah cover team. So I'm laying this on your lap, you know, all the politics I had. Now, if I have a political issue, I'll just forward it to you or I will inform you. And I would look to you to get it fixed either with the help of whatever resources you have, including the voter selection. Uh. So you would be the escalation point for all our political and for all the political issues and the resolution of that. Any questions up to now?
What is the state of the proposal? I mean, in the, not in your presentation here, but in the documents we received, as part of our packet, there's a, there's a specific. Proposal from, what Unified, is that the name of the company?
Yeah.
Uh. What, if that were to be, is that something that is self-sufficient? That is, it can. That when they made that, whatever they quoted for eighteen thousand eight hundred dollars, whatever it was, and it's a little more now, I understand. Uh I mean, is that something that they fully understand, they're ready to go, they've they've surveyed the. Uh the the town, they know what exists and so there's there's a, there's a. That's essentially the plan to put all the infrastructure in place, as I understand.
Yes, we were ready to go June thirty. Uh because we were told we've got to do this in three, four, five days, you know, so we were ready um. Uh with uh the proposal that we have, we believe we are ready. But I think you need to reconstitute the team, you need to appoint somebody because I I don't know if all the three who are working on the team. Are willing and able to do that. I know Scott is. David, I don't know, I hope he is. Uh because you need a minimum of three people, I know that. But apart from that, it's a sort of an internal requirement for us to get ready. They are ready to go. Of course, it will take. Some amount of time because the uh supply chains are backed up for these switches and stuff, two weeks, three weeks maybe. But once we get going, what I have suggested to them is, and this was an idea that he said, this was the best idea from. You know, this was an idea from the C I O at Newton and he said the best thing he did, which is do one building at a time. Okay, do one building, see how it goes, give it a few days, let it calm down, then do the next building, don't go change everything altogether. So yes, the answer is yes to that. It's a longer saying yes.
And and when, if if this were to be done.
Yeah.
It, there would be still nothing there operational, I understand, correct? We, I mean, you've still got nothing to plug a phone, you you you, we haven't got a phone to plug into the, into the V O I P system. Yeah, correct?
Yes and no, because you can do what's called a ping. A ping means it says I can go from here. This terminal here to the other terminal in the other building. Right now, the, over and above that, they have something, we would. I didn't go into the detail, but there's something called a virtual private network where you sort of, across the board here. You define virtual private networks which are collections of people or terminals or whatever. That are specifically assigned certain policies for security, et cetera, et cetera. So the answer is yes, it is there. You can ping things, you you can connect to any, you'll be able, if nothing else is done, you can connect from any terminal to any terminal across the town, right? And then it's a matter of laying on various things on top of this. But there will be, I yeah, I want to make it clear, there will be no functionality as such. The functionality will be at the network level. You have the highway, you have the cars running on it. You don't have uh. Over, what what should I say? You don't have traffic lights or you don't have something like that, you know what I mean?
Hmm.
Okay, yes.
And is there, would we need so, a programmer? To make, when it comes time to be operational, will we need a a programmer to do all that?
Now, a person like Scott already does a lot of this for the town because he has his network. He has all the functions of the uh school running on that network.
Your school, school's already V O I P?
Yeah, they have V I P. Yeah, I mean, even the police have a V I P system.
Okay.
And uh the good news about that is I think that system is a good system, one they have, which is uh my turn. So uh but that's, I, as I said, we, during the conversation. Yeah, we can move to a V I P system, there are costs associated with that which are different. And that they are, they are not insignificant, I would say.
No.
But I I would say that really one of the first things I would try to do is to get the financial system off. Because you have this my system.
I'm not worried, I'm not worried about, what I'm worried about right now is the infrastructure.
Yeah, yeah.
The operations. And if, and 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 well, I guess what I would need assurance of is that if we were to say, okay. I'm I'm not sure we're ready to do that just today, but if we were to say, yes, okay, go with that, that. Program that is, that is outlined in that document that we received.
Yes.
That all the infrastructure would be in place.
Uh I won't say all because some of these words are heavily loaded, okay? If you say all, you're going to say, uh is the firewall there? Is backup and redundancy there?
Firewall's not a, I mean, that's a, that's software, right?
No, that's infrastructure, come on.
Okay, well, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So what I'm saying is you have to be very careful about what I say, but I will tell you. It is there, you will have the ability to go from, to simply stated, you'll have the ability to go from any. Point or any terminal to any terminal across the town. Now, over time, as we. Add other things, we might restrict the ability for anybody to go to anybody, but it's there, it will be there. The highway is there.
Okay. So so is there.
Yeah.
Is is there anything that's not in that proposal that we were sent? That has to occur.
Mm-hmm.
To make, to to go to the next step.
Huh. To go to the next step, not that.
Is that, if we, if we were to do that, are we ready to go to the next step?
Yes, I would say so.
Okay. And and how much management does the town need to provide? To do this particular project?
It's not. Uh if, if the town provides yeah cover to the team. I think the team knows exactly what to do. We've lost a little memory because of the time lag. Uh we'll have to just come up to speed. And then get the people back and uh ready to go. Uh. I would say within a month, you'll begin to see progress, within two months, it should be done.
And RJ, when you talk about the team, you need yourself and Scott and.
Dave.
Uh Dave. And that you're, are you saying you also need more people or you're playing with those three?
Those three and Tim providing the support.
Okay.
Of what I have required, requested. And your your support in terms of what I have requested.
Yeah, okay.
I, I should say a few other things. I think uh in working on this project, I've, Jim O'Shea in the school has been tremendous. Uh I I should say that and he has helped with funding and a whole bunch of things like that, including providing Scott. Uh and he might have even incurred some money, which I don't know if it's there or not. And the other thing I should say is, I have to say this kid, Kate was there all the time advising me how to work with the town, giving me. The support I needed, you know, and uh, you know, helping me right through this process and more recently. Barney has been helpful and Al also has given me good advice. I thank you for that. Uh I just want to show you one more slide.
Uh-oh. The ringer.
Uh okay, no, 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 actually. Can be this quickly, appoint a project lead, okay, who knows technology, activate the team. Uh no, uh the person would have to do some knowledge transfer, get the vendor engaged back again. Okay, and then implementation, right? That's it. That's the list. Uh so I just quickly wanted to say what the person would have to do. Uh but Al, I I assure you, I know the questions you're asking. You know, the questions you're asking have to do with, after you put this money in. Will we still get another highway in North of Korea? And the answer is no. Okay. Okay, I say.
That's, that's the question.
But you have to also appreciate that I'm being cautious because I don't, you know, things have meaning in technology. That sometimes might be misunderstood or misstated or, you know, just I'd be careful.
Yep.
Last thing, uh issue tracker. So here's another thing that I talked about bringing some little process into the town. This is something that many companies use, but basically, if there's any issue between, for example, Drive Tech and Unified. I will not accept it as an issue until the person who is responsible from Drive Tech puts it here. There's one person from Drive Tech. One person from Unified. They put it here and then we look at how resolution goes. Whether it's an issue between those two companies or whether it's an issue within the town. We're going to track it here. Hopefully, the target is zero issues on both the side of the external. Matrix and the internal matrix. But by looking at this after the project is done, you can see, you know. Who's the one who raised the most number of issues, which were real? Who's the one who raised the most number of issues that were not real? You know, uh how long did it take to resolve an issue? Those are all metrics that will just come out of this little uh little uh. Uh table that I have here and it's, it's very, very powerful. It's, it's kind of like a vaccine for some level of politics.
Okay. Anybody have questions?
Uh yeah, I have a few questions.
Hi David.
Hi RJ. So I'm coming in, you know, because Nathan was working with you on this stuff, I think. So I don't know a lot of stuff. Tell me the, the overall objective, not of this, but of everything is what? Faster, more secure communications? I mean, give me the one sentence objective of the end game of everything.
The end game is to move the Carlisle Communications Infrastructure into the twenty first century, supporting. The well-organized structure and organization processes of the Carlisle Town.
Okay, great. So then to, oh, quiet. Um to uh then go back to what Alan, I'm gonna have to let her out, hold on. To go back to what Alan is saying, she knows when I go off mute, it's really interesting. Um go, out. When uh, what, to what Alan was saying, he's laughing, um. This will, this is like, as you said, RJ, the highway, right? So after this, what's next? Like. Eighteen, nineteen, twenty K, that's not much, but what is the?
So I actually.
Tale of everything.
Would you permit me to say what's on my mind?
Yeah, sure.
I think the town needs to start with a vision, strategy and objectives. It is from your side that the requirements for the digital infrastructure should come. I can go running and put a wipe system off, make a big argument for a wipe system, offer a finance system, offer something else. It doesn't make sense until it is your priority.
Right, no, I'm not, maybe I'm, okay, fair enough, but I mean, I'm trying to understand, I mean, this seems like obvious, something obvious we should do. But that's twenty K and I just want to know, like.
Uh okay.
Are we embarking on a hundred K mission or two hundred K mission?
Let let me say something else. I think that immediate thing that we can do under the same vendor is putting the right level of firewalls. Uh you know, for security. Firewalls is something that's important and I think that's an immediate thing. I don't know how much it costs, I don't think it costs that much. Uh so firewall should be something that we would do, right?
Yeah.
Uh. I I'm cautious about saying this, but uh. The the default answer would be do the wipe system. I can tell you that the wipe system will cost about, with all the phones and all the stuff. There are three different modalities in which wipe systems run. One is on the cloud, everything is on the cloud, you pay ten twenty dollars a month for each. Uh phone system that is. One is on the cloud, everything is on the cloud, you pay ten twenty dollars a month for each uh phone system that is provided, each phone slash data terminal that is supported through that. That's roughly the cost of that. Or you can have a in-house server. Or you could have a hybrid. Most, all of the towns that are doing this are going into a hybrid where they have some of the stuff in the cloud, they have a local server which stores some of the important information and you have this hybrid model which will come to off the envelope and you don't hold me responsible for saying this, hundred fifty K.
How much?
Hundred fifty K.
Hundred and fifty, okay.
And that's to, that's to buy new phones and the service and the server and all that stuff.
Yeah, the, the phones, I, you know, some of this, I'm thinking again, there may be some phones we can reuse, but uh, I don't know, because some of these, the school has some V I P systems, uh, phone, V I P phones and the police have some V I P phones. And we had to look at how all that comes together, so that's really, it takes a little more work to do that.
Okay, I mean, I, again, I wouldn't make that a precondition of doing this, but that is something we should get a handle on in terms of what, you know, as Alan was saying, what's step two and how much does that cost? So, I mean, that's just a note, I guess. Um, uh, Tim, do you know how many phones approximately we have in town?
Uh, we have about two hundred and seventy-five phones with about hundred and forty-nine lines.
Okay, and my, we did it at my work, my recollection is a couple hundred bucks a phone, if you have to switch.
No, I, I think they're thirty bucks a phone now, I don't know. Uh, I, I may, I may be wrong, it's about thirty to fifty bucks a phone, you can get some good phones.
That seems pretty cheap, okay. Um, so that, one more question is, you mentioned a few times it being political. What could really be political about improving the communication system?
You are, you want me to answer that or not?
Well, yeah, I mean, I, it doesn't seem like a politic, it's not political like deer hunting, right? Just to pick a random.
You had to bring that up, did you?
Highland, it's not political like Highland. What, what's, is it political because of costs? I mean, what would, how could object to a better communication?
Uh, uh, it's, uh, see, the thing is, uh, Kate, you want to say something? Or no?
You're muted, Kate. Kate, you're muted.
Am I?
No, no, Kate, Kate.
No, I, I was trying to keep the dogs at bay, sorry. Um, I think the word is not political, there were some personal issues that needed to be um, uh, adjudicated, so I think a lot of this may just be uh, based in some misunderstandings.
Um, okay, so I mean, it's not, there's nobody saying we shouldn't have a better communication system, is there?
No.
Okay. So it's just a matter, and, and I guess my last question, and it's not really for RJ, it's probably for uh, Tim or Alan is, can we appoint, I mean, I don't know if RJ is volunteering to run this project, but are we allowed to appoint somebody, a non-elected person to do something? I think we are, right?
No, especially something technical.
Yeah, if something's willing, if somebody's willing to help, like he is.
I mean, we can, we can go hire a consultant or we can get a volunteer.
Right, okay. Um, yeah, so thank, nice work, I mean, a lot of very thorough work, RJ, I appreciate it. That's it for me, thank you.
All right, you've given us.
Am I done?
You're done, RJ, thank you very much. Well, you may not be done, you're, you're, you're done for now.
No, I, let me, let me end on a very positive note, I, I do want to do that. I think if we all think of this as being one team working on something that makes a lot of sense to the people of the town, this would be a, it would be a fun thing to do and it'd be the right thing to do, trust me, I believe it in my heart, it is the right thing.
Good.
Well, and I think, and we've got, you know, we've already got a big investment in fiber optic.
Yeah.
Laying in the ground all over town and it's not connected to anything. And we need to, I mean, this would, this would at least bring all that together and be give us to be give a found, as you say, a foundation for building on it. And then we can get as creative as we want with personnel management software and financial software, all kinds of other wonderful things. Uh, you know, but it's a, but those are all, those are all add-ons.
I do have one, I'm sorry, one more technical question. Why does the, why does the ninety-six fibers start up at the school and go down to the town instead of?
New way, well, ask.
Well, that's, I don't have an answer for that because that was in place when I came.
But does that mean that the, is there some big fiber that comes from Comcast that starts at?
Yeah, yeah, there is fiber, but uh, I think the reason was that they had to move uh, the server from the town hall to the.
Ah, okay, I remember that, okay. It's not because we moved, all right, I remember that now, we did, we moved the server from town hall to the school because it has better connection up there or something, I don't know.
Uh, it's closer to the uh.
The, the roof doesn't leak, that was, that was a big.
I think a very important point that I just thought about, okay? I think it might be useful for the board of selectmen to think of a really sort of well put together IT room for the servers and all that rather than having, you know, things here and there. You might want to think of a room somewhere.
But I think, I think the school has essentially volunteered that, right?
Yeah, then that'd be good.
I wouldn't un-volunteer them from that, they've already said.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And they have the guy who can go and, you know, twiddle at it when something goes down.
Yep.
I believe Jim has been very cooperative in, in volunteering Scott's services.
Yeah, Jim has been, I mean, and I tell you, without Scott, I couldn't do this. He has been great.
Scott is very good.
And he's just a nicest employee you can have. Tim, I have a request from you, for you.
Okay.
You know, David, your job is to get David back on this project, if he's revering. He's not, I don't think he is, but things change, so I, I don't know.
Oh, David Mackay, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, yep, I'll talk to David.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, RJ.
Thank you.
RJ.
Bye.
Great.
All right, that was interesting.
And informative, it's the first time I've really understood some of these pieces.
Well, you know, I, I, when I was president of the college, we went through all this because we were, I was, that was the days when we were switching from analog to digital and it was an interesting project. It's a little more complicated than it seems to the outset, but very good. All right, let's move on. Uh, appointments and resignations.
Let me. Resignations. This is number seven. Okay, I move that the board of selectmen vote to accept the letter of resignation from Walter Hickman from the Senior Tax Advisory Board effective immediately.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Um, I would, uh, accept it with regret, I guess.
Yeah.
He's worked on it for a long time, uh, on that particular board.
Okay.
And thank, thank him for his service.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote?
Arnold, aye.
Oscar, aye.
Louis, aye.
Ode, aye.
Read, aye.
Unanimously, gone.
I, I move to appoint Maureen Cosgrove, Derry, five seventy-five South Street and George Payne at five seventy-five South Street to serve on the Carlyle Affordable Housing Trust with terms expiring on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Well, I have a question to ask, I thought we had put, put this off until the trustees could meet, did, were there um applications solicited? Um, don't we have, and, and do we have another um vacancy on that?
Well, there, um, Jen reached out to them uh back in, I guess, maybe June or to ask if they wanted to uh be considered to continue on the.
Performer, the performer request, yeah.
Yeah, and they both replied saying, yes, they were interested in continuing.
Okay, so we have one vacancy left there.
Correct.
Okay, and we need to wait, get that going on.
I, I, I have a more basic freshman question here. I remember there was a lot of publicity around the resignation of a bunch of people on affordable housing and this and that, so what, where, like, where are we really with affordable housing?
That was a, it wasn't the Affordable Housing Trust, it was the Housing.
Authority.
Authority, where the resignations occurred. And essentially that, that, all those functions that the Housing Authority had were then deeded to the Affordable Housing Trust. And so that's where that sits at the moment.
And what, what is their mission then, this trust?
To, uh, well, in, in, both to secure funding for and encourage the development of affordable housing in the town of Carlyle.
Okay, and are the boardists, the boardists, they report to us, the select board, or do they?
Well, they are us.
Four of the five members of the board, except the chair, serve on the trust.
So I didn't, that didn't, I know, um, you've mentioned it Barney, in, in the goal discussion we just had, we didn't, that didn't bubble up to the surface, so do we have any mission to do anything this year?
Well, I, I think there are some missions that we could be pursuing. For instance, uh, because of COVID, CPA and housing trusts are um able to do some rent, um, help with rent. And I think we could be possibly looking, you know, at other things that um we could be doing in the COVID situation to, just to start with. Um, and then, I, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to jump in Barney, but that is one thing that we could certainly be looking at.
Yeah, and last year, David, um, up until COVID hit, um, you know, our, our, our first priority was trying to get uh things at Benfield uh in better shape. And, you know, that's ongoing, but at least it's on a path to be, the, the whole septic issue. Um, there's still some issues around maintenance, et cetera, but um we have, we have not met in, uh, well, since, since, uh, I think it was since February.
February, I think was our last meeting.
Yeah, so we need to, we need to meet and we need to look at what is it we're going to try to do.
Okay, so that's four of us plus these two people?
Yes, plus an opening for a additional person.
And last question then is, um, Tim, I forget her name now, uh, from Lexington, who was our longtime administrator who helped us. What's that?
Elizabeth Burnett, you mean?
Yes, Elizabeth Burnett, so we don't have her anymore, so what?
We don't.
Who does the work of this, whatever the work ends up being?
Good question.
Well, there are some major, uh, M A P C, for instance, does a lot of housing help and there are other, um, you know, consulting semi, um, I don't know what, governmental, uh, well, M A P C is not governmental, but it's kind of, you know, coalition of various groups. There, there, there's a number of groups out there that we can get help from, to help.
There are regional housing consortiums that the, the board has discussed potentially joining at, at some point and CPA funds are an approved uh funding source for membership in those organizations. We haven't taken that step, but that's, at the time, that was, that was an avenue that was encouraged.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, no further questions, Your Honor.
All right, we have a motion and a second, uh, roll call vote?
Arnold, aye.
Oscar, aye.
Louis, aye.
Ode, aye.
Read, aye.
Thank you.
I move to appoint David Eli, six ten Rutland Street to serve on the Agricultural Commission with a term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Moved and seconded, is there discussion?
No. I wonder if he sells eggs.
Okay, hearing no discussion, roll call vote?
Arnold, aye.
Oscar, aye.
Louis, aye.
Ode, aye.
Read, aye. I move to appoint Ruben Klickstein, uh, fifty-one Indian Hill, or Klickstein, I don't know, um, to serve on the Senior Tax Advisory Board with a term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote?
Arnold, aye.
Oscar, aye.
Louis, aye.
Ode, aye.
Read, aye. I move to appoint Chief John Fisher, Sergeant Scott Barnes and Lieutenant Leo T. Crowe from the Carlyle Police Department and Joseph Topol, eighty-one Greystone Lane as constables with terms expiring on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, any discussion?
Uh, freshman question, what's a constable?
They're the guys that sit next to, for instance, that, one of their jobs is to sit next to the, you know, ballots during elections, Tim, what else do they do?
They uh, serve uh people with the papers or subpoenas.
Yeah.
Uh, they, they post town meeting warrants and official documents. I think Mr. Topol is the only one that does it for a living, the rest of them are members of our police force that post documents from town clerk.
That was my next question, so this is a paid gig by the event or what, how, how is that?
We, we don't, we don't pay any of them, but Mr. Topol, I, I assume is paid by the court to deliver summonses and other documents to people.
But we certainly pay the, do we pay the officers when they're sitting at the elections and all that? I assume we do, right?
That'd be a detail, yes, yeah, and they're at the polls.
Right, and is that an overtime assignment or is that part of their regular?
It's, it's, uh, I, I believe it's over, it's at the overtime rate, it's in four-hour increments. So I, I, I think that's not straight time, that's overtime.
Okay, and they're all senior managers, right? The Lieutenant Crowe and Chief Fisher and the Sergeant, so is that like a plum assignment for, when you get to a certain level in the force?
The, well, the con, the constables are usually not the, the, the officers assigned to the poll duty.
That's true, that's right.
The constables are just posting uh town meeting warrants and things like that.
Okay, okay, so they're not sitting there, they're just assigning people to sit there.
Yep.
Yeah, it could be, any, any cop could be working the detail at town hall that day.
Right, and that detail is no different than the traffic detail, right? Construction.
The same, yep.
And all of those details, whenever they get details are, that's not part of their regular day, right?
Right.
Correct, it's all overtime.
Then, okay, okay, and so is that the reason why it's a sergeant, a chief and a lieutenant? In that role of constable, or does that have nothing, is that coincidental?
It, uh, traditionally, it's always been the chief or the lieutenant that, that posts the town meeting warrants, that's the only time we really need a constable.
Okay, okay, all right, very good, thank you.
It's kind of like the inspector of fences.
Got one of those too.
Yeah.
Don't we have like a flagpole duty?
Hey, I met, I met him, I did, and he actually, he actually had did duty last weekend.
Yes.
When he, during the Indian celebration, he, uh, he put up the flag.
Yeah.
In fact, if somebody could give me his, um, do, do you have his email? Because we need to forward that thank you note.
I'll, I'll get it, it's, I mean, I'll, yeah, I know who he is, yeah. Good, all right, uh.
All right, so there was.
Further discussion, not hearing any, I will ask for a roll call vote?
Arnold, aye.
Oscar, aye.
Louis, aye.
Ode, aye.
Read, aye. Okay, last one, move to appoint Brian, Brian Mottershead, one ten Patch Meadow Lane to serve on the Energy Task Force Committee with the.
Oh, you skipped Adelaide Grady.
Well, she's not on here yet, I've.
She's not on.
Yeah, she is, she.
No, she's not on the one that I got.
My version, yeah, because she, her, her letter was.
He's in the letter, but not the motion for some reason.
The motion I'm looking at, which I downloaded today, has appointing Brian Mottershead and Adelaide Grady to serve on the Energy Task Force. And I, I wrote to Jen on Friday, I think it was, when I saw this and saw that Adelaide wasn't on it. And I said, yeah, but there's a letter of interest from her, so shouldn't she be on it? And so she told Jen.
Okay, I, I didn't see that she had amended the, the.
I didn't either, because I, I downloaded it when I got it and I put it in a folder of.
I didn't either, cause I, I downloaded it when I got it, and I put it in a folder of minutes so that I can find it when we're at the meeting.
But, but I did handwrite it on my sheet, so.
Oh, you did, okay.
It wasn't gonna be forgotten, yeah.
So I moved Brian Mottershead and Adelaide Grady, and do you know what her address is?
75 Indian Hill.
75 Indian Hill, to serve on the Energy Task Force Committee, with terms expiring June 30th, 2021.
Can I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, call, roll call.
Arnold, aye.
Oscar, aye.
Louis, aye.
More aye.
Reed, aye.
Thank you, and just one question, Kate, did you include George Payne in your, in the initial?
Yes, I did.
Okay, I just missed it, good, thank you. All right, Town Administrator's Report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, a couple of updates in my report on, uh, two big projects going on in town. The first of which is the, uh, solar panels at, uh, Carlisle Public School. Solar panels being installed by MRSCO, and simultaneously, the paving of the, uh, parking lot after many years of, uh, disrepair. Rob Furtado, uh, Facilities Manager at the school, has been managing both projects and, and doing a fine job, coordinating both of them. The paving, I think, is done, except for the striping of some spaces, and they're waiting for some additional, uh, equipment, to complete the, uh, solar panel job, but from all accounts, things are going well, and, uh, I think we gave you a picture that they sent to us of the.
Yeah, it looks great.
Yeah.
In progress, yeah, that, much different than it used to, uh, used to look.
Did they have those posts painted to me, to match the building, actually?
It was to match my eyes.
Oh, I see. It's one in every crowd.
All right, and the, the complete streets project is, uh, moving, moving forward quite well. You probably noticed the, uh, installation of the cobblestones.
Yeah.
Around the, uh, the rotary, uh, this week. And Niche Engineering's been managing the construction, uh, for the town with the able assistance of, uh, Luke and, uh, Chase Fisher and Soros, and Bill Rizzo and Lee Storrs, that have been, uh, dropping in on the contractors, uh, and, uh, you know, holding them to task. So we think that project, it was originally scheduled to be completed, I think, by August 29th. There was a bit of a delay with the, uh, with the rotary, so it might take about a week to two weeks longer than that. There was an issue with the reveal of the curb above the cobblestones that was resolved. But it took a, it took some time to get, uh, agreement on that. Also, the pattern of the cobblestones was a bit of an issue, because it, it said one thing in the specs, it specked out the circular pattern you see, uh, currently, but the, on the drawings, they were in a different, uh, uh, kind of pattern. So there was some confusion over that, but, uh, we think the right choice was been made on that. And, uh, it should be done within, you know, a week or two, uh, we hope. And, uh, additionally, the contractor will be performing, uh, some paving under contract to DPW that was planned for in, in that area as well. So, uh, you know, all, all signs positive on, on both of those pretty big projects. We had hoped to have them both done by the, well, actually, school's not starting till the 15th, is it?
Right.
Yeah, so we, we, we got a little bit of time, yeah. That's the whole reason for delay in school.
You guys are incredibly clairvoyant.
Yeah.
All right, all right, now just, go ahead.
Well, uh, it looks good, um, I, I, I'm very pleased with the way it's turning out. My, my, one complaint has been about the police details. Uh, today, uh, I actually stopped my car and asked the two policemen, who were supposed to be directing traffic, to please separate themselves from their three foot spacing with no masks. And so I wonder, you know, it, it makes me question why our, you know, $50,000 was what was in our budget for police detail, and if we really needed two guys, if they're both on the same side of the street and spending, because an hour and a half previously, my husband went to Stowe and drove through there, and when I told him the story, he said, oh, that's where they were when I went by an hour and a half ago. So clearly, I'm just, I'll leave it there.
Okay, yeah, we will, we will reinforce, uh, the, the mask issue with the chief on Monday.
Definitely not a good look, but it's also not a good look, honestly, that they just stand there and talk.
Yep.
50K.
All right.
All right, okay, moving on, early voting, uh, for the primary started last Saturday, continues this week, both tomorrow, Wednesday and Thursday, uh, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the town hall. You, of course, can still vote, uh, by mail, you can mail your ballot back, or you can drop it in the, uh, secure mail slot, uh, at town hall. Some people have asked whether they could fold their ballot to make it fit into the mail slot, and yes, you can, that doesn't invalidate your vote. You can fold it, uh, to get it into the, uh, the mail slot, so. It, it sounds like things are going well in that, uh, in that vein, want to do it again in November, but, uh, and then, not too many races on the primary ballot, but, uh, it's a good, uh, good dry run, get them used to, uh, the process. So there was that, and then I've got the draft agenda, and also, I, I got an email from Scott Triola, the Chair of Long Term Caps, member of the Finance Committee, who wanted to remind the board that we need to, uh, replace Nathan as a member of Long Term Caps. We don't have to do that tonight, but he wanted to kind of put that on the board's radar screen list, there's a volunteer for that.
Well, I volunteered, um, because I'm also, uh, you know, because a lot of it's municipal facilities, so I think it'd be just easier.
Makes sense.
Tim, um, question on that, so I remember way back when, there was some move to collapse Long Term Caps right into FinCom, but I guess we can't do that statutorily?
Well, the, the bylaw was rewritten, so that now, uh, I think four of the members are members of, uh, appointed by the Finance Committee, and they appoint four of their own members. I think the, the schools still have a member, the Finance Director appoints one member, I appoint a member, who's usually the Finance Director, so it's, uh, it, 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 an attempt to kind of consolidate it was made, and they do meet jointly, uh, for that reason, because most, you know, more than half of the committee is Finance Committee, so it runs a little better.
Yeah, actually, uh, and of course, that's, it was, that was done, and then we had to change the bylaw after that, because when I came on, I realized that they, the way the FinCom, um, charter is written, FinCom members could not be appointed to any other committee that had anything to do with spending money. So in a way, it's still wrong, it should be a subcommittee of the FinCom. It should not be appointed by us.
Yeah, I think at some point, that's probably.
Talk about.
I mean, having, having sort of labored many years under the old system, I agree with you, I think there's no reason for it to be a separate, especially now, I would say especially now that you have MFC, so the really big ticket items are likely to be on the MFC side. You know, arguing over whether a police cruiser should be bought this year, next year, that really should be merged into, you know, a general operating budget discussion that FinCom can certainly handle.
I agree.
So maybe that's a goal in our reorganization, that's something we can consider.
Yeah.
Tim, uh, how is the poll worker situation, is that, are those getting filled, you know?
For the, uh, well, they, they've had.
What's the primary and the main, main election, yeah.
I'll, I'll have to check on that, they've had, you know, plenty of volunteers for the, uh, the early voting, but.
Okay.
I don't know, they would, yeah, they were trying to get non-seniors, if that's the right way to put it, in the, in, under the interest of, uh, you know, keeping people safe, that the volunteers.
Why, you gotta watch it in this crowd.
No, you don't, no, you don't.
Who is that young man?
I keep on reminding him, I'm old enough to be his mother.
All right.
Tim, you mentioned that, uh, you've got the upcoming, uh, schedule here for different, uh,
Yep.
next couple of meetings, um, and Alan, I'm just wondering, given, uh, the discussion you were having, uh, earlier about the municipal aggregation contract, should we put that on for the, um?
I've already, I've already got several additional things for the fifth meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, September 8th meeting, yeah.
Yeah.
Making the list.
The aggregation contract's really important.
Yep, and we had a nice meeting today on that.
Oh, you did, good, good, good.
Okay, uh, thank you, Tim, any other questions for Tim?
Now, oh yeah, this says October 10th, but is a town meeting, but it's the 17th.
17th, yeah.
Yeah, so, um, are we gonna have our, I'm assuming then we'll have a meeting in October, the Board of Selectmen?
Oh, uh, 2nd and, uh,
2nd and 4th.
So, October, I have, I have us for the 13th and the 27th in October. So if we have the meeting, so we would definitely meet on the 13th before the 17th anyway.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
And probably in 2022, yeah, but.
Yeah, well, if we're doing the, the town meeting on the 17th, we probably don't need to meet on the 20th, but we might want to meet on the 6th, you know, we, I have the feeling we'll have a couple more.
We may need to.
End of September, early October.
Yep, yeah, we'll see how the, uh, stuff comes together, good.
Okay.
Okay, liaison reports.
Well, municipal facilities met today, um, apparently, um, there is a little strip of land that we might be able to put the, um, DPW, um, septic on. We're doing test bits tomorrow, um, to see, um, it, it might be able to be done there, which might save us some money, uh, rather than where we had originally located it. It would require an, uh, an easement, probably, because, um, probably wouldn't fit totally on our land. We'd have to maybe go a little bit on the neighbor's land, but that's where they have their septic. So it's not like it would be, uh, land that they could build anything on anyway, so, you know, but none of that's been even explored, we're just, we're doing the test bits first, um, to see if there's any possibility of putting it, uh, there, so that we don't have a huge, have to pump and have a huge, uh, line, um, so. But I think regardless, you know, you know, you have your easement, Barney, that, and whether you're at with it, and I think there were other elements in that easement, regardless of whether we did the, um, I don't remember, but regardless of whether we do the septic or not, whether some, not some other aspects of, of land easements, were we, weren't we giving you an easement also partially in return?
Yes.
So, we, we may be doing that easement anyway, I don't know.
Okay.
Okay, I mean, it's, and that would be up to you, I would say.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so, but keep, stay tuned.
Yeah, I have a couple, uh, I met with the COA, uh, their recent meeting, uh, and, uh, they discussed, uh, obviously, they, they're concerned over the storage of the medical equipment at Highland and their ability to access it, uh, even talking, uh, you know, whether or not it's, would be a reasonable thing, for instance, to rent a container or something to put it in on a temporary basis until a long-term solution is found, but, uh, they didn't make any decisions. The newest part-time social worker attended that meeting, she seems highly involved, uh, working already, uh, working hard at a number of areas, and, uh, seems to be, uh, doing very, very well. And, uh, and they also, uh, of course, asked to be on the Highland Committee, so both Joan and, uh, Walter have agreed to do that, or one of, probably, probably Joan will be the representative of Highland Committee, I don't think we need two, but we'll see. Uh, I met with the FinCom, uh, last night, and I already reported on that, so I won't do it again. And today, we met with the, uh, aggregate of people involved with aggregation to try to begin to move that process forward again. That, that contract does expire at the end of the year, uh, a couple of issues, uh, come up on that. Obviously, we, we could simply renew with Colonial, I think that, that's who we're with now, uh, or, uh, look for, to go to a, a more, uh, local, uh, company. The idea was, it would probably be more expensive, but it might be greener, uh, but we don't know, that's, but those are all things that have to be looked into. And so the, the idea was to get, get started on that, so that we can get some decisions made and, uh, be ready to either, redo the current contract or, uh, decide to go somewhere else. Hey, we, we need to get the numbers, so we know what we're doing.
How, how could it, how could it be greener than what we've got? We are also on all wind.
Well, sort of, I guess, uh, the, 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 the key is, apparently Texas is where, where our wind farm is.
Yes.
Uh, has more capacity than they have use, and so there's no incentive to develop anymore there. Uh, so the idea was, if you, if you used a New England or a regional company, there'd be incentive to build more, this kind of thing. Anyway, that's, that's the thinking.
I heard that.
We, we didn't, we didn't get into the pros and cons of that argument, we just, we just said that, that is the argument that's being used.
Yeah, I heard that argument the last time, and I don't buy it, I'm sorry, but we can go there another time.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, and by the way, the, uh, in the first year, we, the town saved, the aggregate homeowners of the town saved $150,000 in their energy costs, for electricity costs.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm, for one, interested in continuing to save the money and keeping it green.
Yeah.
We'll see if that happens, I mean, we don't know what, what the numbers will come in.
Yeah, no, we don't, we don't, yeah.
And that was, um, with over 90% of the town, uh, residents, 90% of the residents being part of the program.
Yeah, Tim, when does the, uh, do you know when the contract for the municipal electricity is up?
The, uh,
Cause we're bound to ever source for the time being, I believe.
I'd have to, I'd have to look at that.
Yeah.
I, I don't recall.
Yeah.
Well, we probably should look into it and see if we can cut ourselves, you know, maybe renegotiate it even.
Yep. So that's what, there's, apparently, we do this through brokers, and, uh, so that's where they have to go, yeah. Anything else?
Yeah, I, I'm just trying to think, who was the guy that came in last time, Tim? Was anybody else on the board, or was it just me?
No, I was there, I was there.
All right, okay.
Yeah, that's why, in fact, you know, I, I heard all those arguments about, you know, that.
Yeah.
The Massachusetts screen, it was better, because it would incentivize other Massachusetts companies to, honestly.
Yeah, but maybe we can get him in again, you know?
Well, I'm assuming that's, that's.
Well, this is the Energy Task Force that's, um, got two, two people, um, Bob Zog and Glenn Reed are doing the, uh, conversations with the broker and the sort of research.
Oh, they are, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah. And they both seem.
Yeah.
Very much on top of it.
Oh, yeah, no, they are, yeah, no, they're good.
All right, uh, any other liaison reports?
Yes, um, so I can report on a couple of things, uh, school.
He wants to report too.
Committee, um, as was previously reported, is moving forward with their potential hybrid plan that, um, would, uh, why, how do you know that, how do you even know?
I'm surprised you guys.
Just the sound of your voice. The school, uh, school is proceeding with its plan for the hybrid opening, as was reported. As I mentioned earlier, we are also trying to understand what the best, um, sort of, I don't even want to say test protocol, just protocol, would be to keep, monitor the situation, because, um, you know, in my opinion, we've gotten to an equilibrium point in the summer with everybody, you know, practicing to various degrees, social distancing and being outside, and certainly not going to school, and, you know, that. And we're about to take kind of a stepwise change, uh, relative to that, to, um, uh, to introduce, you know, 600 kids or 500 kids into. or five hundred kids into, into a school environment. And while we monitor the statistics, as was earlier reported, like twenty-one cases, or however many cases, that's sort of secondary, we don't really have a good framework, in my opinion, to say what's really happening, kind of, at the school, parent, teacher level, you know, with that community, that little ecosystem. So there is a task force that the Board of Health created, we had the first meeting, sort of an organizational meeting yesterday, and the main task force, which is going to be charged with looking at testing and the various possibilities of testing, you know, is it antibody testing, is it pool testing, is it periodic testing, is it no testing, you know, all that kind of stuff. Todd Thorson is chairing that, and there's some people on there who are pretty well-qualified, Kristin Amati in town, Catherine Think, a very respected immunologist in town, Eva Mustafi from the School Committee, Lauren Sawyer, who's the school nurse, and Tricia McGee, I may mispronounce her name, who's the nurse from Emerson and Concord, who's assigned to Carlisle, so that's a good committee. There's a Vaccine Clinic Advisory Group, I'm not sure what they're doing, but that's headed by Jennifer Darkazarian, also from town, who's a nurse and very experienced in those areas. And then there's a Communication Advisory Group that I am part of, that is with Jean Berry running it, and that really, to me, is very important, because based on all that stuff, I believe there's a real need for clear communication coming with the stamp of the Board of Health to people in town. This is what's going on, this is where you go if you need to get tested, you know, blah, blah, blah. I mean, there's a lot of information out there, but it doesn't seem to be promulgated in, you know, kind of consistent fashion. So at the very least, at the moment, we want to make sure that everyone in the school community, the parents, the teachers, and the children, have a very clear idea of what to expect, and if something happens, okay, what is next, because that's like sort of the first wave of things that I expect to happen, you know, we all talk about another wave, and maybe that'll hit in the winter or whatever, but right now, I mean, as of September fifteen, people are going to start to co-mingle in ways that we have not done for, you know, several months. So, last thing for me is regional school, I haven't been following it that closely, but the town of Concord asked the Regional School Committee to come up, or the region to come up with a three-hundred-thousand-dollar budgetary reduction for the fiscal year, which they did do, so, and, and the FinCom is well aware of this, and so the flow down to Carlisle, which is a twenty-five percent stakeholder in that region, will be, you know, on the order of seventy-five K reduction from the current budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Hearing none, I will accept a motion to adjourn. We have no minutes tonight.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Arnold I.
Askaloo I.
Louis I.
What ally?
You were muted, but I got rid of your lips. Thank you all, people.
My dog was, was growling at David's dog, so I had to mute it.
Now, everybody's a critic.
Now he's back to sleep, you see.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
Really, cold.
So is mine, he's all calm, she's all calm now, there's nothing to talk about. He's just jealous of me.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Alan, good night, Tim, bye.
Good night.
Thank you.